If I put the brakes on, I think I can get through again.
It is 5:30. We will go ahead and get started. The Chair will call the September 3, 2013, meeting of the City Council to order if he'd rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the Clerk please call the room?
Alderman Edwards.
Here.
Alderman Simpson.
Here.
Alderman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Lesko.
Here.
Alderman Kenman.
Here.
Alderman Joe.
Here.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderman Tylen.
Here.
Alderman Dove.
Alderman Griffin.
Here.
Mayor Houston.
Here. The Chair recognizes Director William McCarty of the Office of Budget Management for a brief presentation regarding city finances.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Try and get through this quickly, if I can make this do work. Coming up.
Okay.
This report is through the month of July. On the revenue side of things, revenues continue to perform well. We are up $3.2 million versus budget. Local taxes are about where we expected. That's mostly your sales taxes and your property taxes. They're about $60,000 over where we thought they'd be at this point. Pilot continues to outperform expectations. We're still a little over $500,000 in overperformance. And as I explained last month, state shares of revenue are up precipitously due to accounting changes that were implemented by our new accounting firm and the fact that we had a large influx of income tax money that came from a couple of different origins. One is the fact that people paid more income taxes because they sold assets at the end of the previous year. And the other thing is because the state got so much more money, we got an extra payment over and above what we thought we would have to this point. So, we're up, I believe that's about 2.3 million of the $3.2 million positive variance. On the expense side, what I don't want you to do is to look at this and be concerned about the $2.5 million budget variance that you see because of the method we use to calculate the monthly budget numbers. We have an extra million dollars more in pension payments this year. There was no police contract in place last year through July, and hence, no raises reflected last year to this point through July. Overtime has been much higher this year than originally anticipated. And we passed a fleet supplemental ordinance in April and subsequently spent $400,000 on the fleet building in the month of July. So, all of those things collectively skew the numbers. The takeaway here is that in reality, we are under budget. We've spent 40% of the original budget, and we are 41.7% into the fiscal year. And that is despite the fact that overtime is up several hundred thousand dollars over where we thought we'd be at this point in time. So, in conclusion, revenues, again, continue to outperform. We're very happy with what we're seeing there. Spending is not really at a level that concerns us. Garage and police overtime are starting to fall back in line as we anticipated. Our primary concerns at this point in time include the pending fire contract. Fire overtime continues to be an issue. And as you learned last week, we have a pending U.S. EPA cleanup that's going to cost somewhere around a million dollars, give or take, once we finally get the bill. So, at this point, I'll entertain any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, where is that money that we owe, it's going to put us to the EPA? Where is that going to put us in terms of budget?
Well, at the end of the day, there's a couple of different places that we could look at paying that. But let's assume that we continue to be under budget, as I expect we will be, and we continue to see an overperformance of revenues, as I expect to also continue. We will have enough money surplus in this fiscal year to go ahead and do a supplemental and to make that payment if it's around a million dollars. Remember, in the last couple of years, we've had some pretty significant surpluses. Two years ago, we paid off about $2 million in debt at the end of the fiscal year. Last year, we did an extra million-dollar pension payment. I assume we'll have that type of room this year, and we could utilize that for the EPA cleanup cost.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the Clerk would note that Alderman Dove has joined. He is here. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion say aye. All those opposed say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. The Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the August 20, 2013, City Council meeting and approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Those opposed say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Those opposed say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. The Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion vote yes. Those opposed vote no. Voting is now open. Tenon. Passes tenon. The Chair will entertain a motion to remove agendas number 2013-314 and 2013-315 from committee and place them on the debate agenda for the purpose of holding a public hearing regarding Agenda Number 2013-314, which is an annexation agreement for 3419 Woodhaven Road.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion say aye. All those opposed say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. Agendas and numbers 2011-104, 2012-123, 2012-226, 2012-376, 2013-128, 2013-174, 2013-193, 2013-250, 2013-260, 2013-13-6263, 2013-264, 2013-266, 2013-296, 2013-312, and 2013-313 remain tabled or in committee.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to pull 2013-263 out of committee and, or out of the table and put it on the floor and debate agenda.
Okay. 2013, we don't need a...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just 13 will be on debate agenda.
Well, he made a motion. Don't we have to vote on that?
No, do we?
Yeah.
Okay. Excuse me now. I thought it was just automatic.
I didn't hear a second either.
Okay. Well, actually, Alderman Joe did. Let's get the motion seconded.
Can I ask a question of the sponsor? What's the reason for bringing this out?
All those committee members have now been identified, and we removed last time the non-union employees from this deal. So, the question, the only question I think that would remain would be, how do we do the non-union employees?
Well, was there still a question as to whether this, the committee acted as an advisory body to the City Council, and since it was closed, is in violation of the Open Meetings Act?
We discussed that. That'd be a good discussion.
All right. Okay. It's motion and second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed say nay.
Aye.
No. Motion carries. Okay. The first item on the agenda then becomes ordinance number 2013-263, an ordinance authorizing execution of a three-year contract with Core Source Incorporated to serve as the third-party administrator and utilization review management team for the City of Springfield's health insurance program as approved by the Joint Labor Management Healthcare Committee for employees covered by the collective bargaining agreements and to serve as the third-party administrator for all employees and retirees participating in the City of Springfield's health plan from September 1, 2013 through 2013, through February 28, 2016, in an amount not to exceed $1,641,007.26 for the Office of Human Resources. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Discussion.
I have a question. This list of the members of the Joint Committee, Joint Labor Management Healthcare Committee that we were handed out, were those the same people that were on the Joint Labor Management Healthcare Committee when the committee recommended to the City Council that we execute this contract with Core Source Incorporated?
It's my understanding that the members of the committee can vary from month to month depending upon the meeting, but I think the, in terms of looking at the minutes, these would be the...
There was actually just one change of seat. On a union seat, it was a machinist. Ed Hafer was not there during the collective bargaining. Another machinist was there at that time, and his name escapes me, but he was the International Association Machinist and Aerospace Workers, District 9.
So, anytime this committee meets, the membership can change at any meeting?
The union can send who they would designate for. Most of the time, it is the same persons. We do have changes of chairs, and obviously, as management, I can't dictate who's going to be there on behalf of the union representatives.
But you're always there because you're the chair.
Yes.
Right.
Now I am.
Oh, you weren't the chair when the committee recommended that we adopt this contract with Core Source?
Yes, I was.
Okay. So, now, is there any method whereby before each meeting or after each meeting, the names of all the people who are on the committee for that meeting is recorded, say, with the City Clerk's office or somewhere, that members of the public can always know who was on this committee?
This is considered collective bargaining. Since I have joined, obviously come on, this is only representative of the union and management. So, other than my negotiation notes, which I'm keeping, designating who's there, then there's no official because it's collective bargaining and exempt pursuant to the FOIA statute.
Is this committee going to continue to make recommendations as an advisory body?
Yes.
Recommendations to the City Council?
We're completely advisory. That's correct. No final decisions are made. It's just an advisory capacity.
But advisory bodies to a public body such as us are, under the Open Meetings Act, subject to the Open Meetings Act. Isn't that correct, Mr. Corporation Counsel?
Under, pursuant to Section 24 of the Illinois Public Labor Relations Act, collective bargaining unit members, when we are collectively bargaining for the unions, are exempt from the Open Meetings Act, specifically under Section 24.
Right. But you were not, you were doing something other than collectively bargaining for the union. They were recommending to the City Council that for non-union employees, we adopt this contract with Core Source. Isn't that correct?
What happened is, is if I remember correctly, and it's been a while, it's very simple. They offer what they feel is fair for the union. The city decides, under Mayor Houston, whether or not they want to offer the exact same offer to the non-union people to keep it consistent. At no point in time is that board saying what the non-union people are going to get. That all rests with that man right there.
That's correct.
Was that, but was this a recommendation?
That recommendation comes to the Human Resources Department.
So, there wasn't a recommendation from the Joint Labor Management Committee to the City Council that we adopt Core Source as our contractor for this purpose?
Absolutely not. I make sure that they know that they are bargaining for current members only.
All right. So, Mr. Corporation Counsel, are you satisfied that there was no violation of the Open Meetings Act?
I discussed it with Ms. Barton.
Further discussion? I think Alderman Simpson first and then Alderman Edwards.
What's the criteria for sitting on the committee? The criteria?
The criteria? Pursuant to the ordinance that was passed, making up the new Joint Labor Management Committee, the mayor, in his capacity, he appoints six management. And that's consisting of what you see here, who he has appointed. Many of these have long top-term employees with the city. And as far as the six appointees under that ordinance for union members, that is solely dictated by the representatives of who they send as a representative.
Now, people are going to get tired of me talking about this issue because I get really kind of tired of me, too. But Mayor, where's the diversity? There are no African-Americans that can sit on this committee? There are African-Americans that work for the city.
Certainly, there are African-Americans that work for the city, and the people that are on this are basically people such as our Human Resources Director and people that have been involved on this process for a period of time.
So, then, why aren't there any minorities on the committee? I mean, all it takes, Mayor, is for you to look at the various committees that are under you and say, there's no diversity. I need to diversify these committees. I mean, it's really simple, and I don't know that a criteria is that they've been longstanding on the committee. I mean, give somebody else an opportunity to become longstanding on the committee.
I'd say...
That's all.
Alderman Edwards?
Yeah, I just want to make sure the 1.6 million and not change, does that number come from the committee, or does it come from the mayor purchasing? Because it's a big difference. If we're saying the committee agreed to this as it pertains to per case, and that's how we kind of came up with that number, because if they bargained for this number, but it doesn't include retirees and non-union employees, then we probably got a problem with the number, Counsel.
Okay.
But if it comes from the mayor's office, this number, and from obm, this number, outside that committee, then we're probably okay. I just want to know what...
It's the latter. We do not negotiate the amount of funds being spent. We negotiate over the terms of benefits being provided by a TPA.
Okay.
That strictly came from obm.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
There were seven bidders on the...
I mean, that's a big difference. It's a huge...
Mr. Mayor.
There were seven bidders on this.
And this amount of $1,641,000 to serve as a third-party administrator, that's for union and non-union city employees. Is that correct?
It would be for all employees.
Yes, Director McCarty. Can you confirm that? That number of 1.6 is for the union and non-union. Again, we didn't negotiate that. I'm sorry. I don't know that number. I believe...
When it was, when the decision was made to go out for bid on this, it was under the assumption that it would be all employees.
Okay.
It's all employees and retirees, according to the fact...
Yes.
Right.
Employees and retirees. It's correct. Basically, everyone who's covered by the current TPA.
Further questions or discussions?
Just to catch up, because it's been a while since we've had this out. We had a proposed amendment number one. Did we ever vote on this?
It was not adopted, Alderman.
Okay. So, the ordinance as written is what we're voting on now?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Alderman, what did proposed amendment one do?
It was the one that removed, struck out in the title, and to serve as the third-party administrator for all employees and retirees.
We were attempting to separate the two, but that's not an issue.
Yeah. Okay. I remember. Right. Which is why I just wanted to make sure what was, where we were on it.
Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, I'll be voting, if this goes to final passage tonight, I'll be voting no. Why? Because on a large spending item like this, 1.6 million over several years, when we've held something in committee for almost two months, and then all of a sudden, it comes out of committee for final passage tonight, there's insufficient time to review the... I'm not prepared to make a substantive decision on this 1.6 million dollar spending. Why? Because it wasn't on the agenda for final passage tonight. And I remember going back about two months ago, I was trying to assess the value of this contract because it's a new third-party administrator as compared to the ones we've used in the past, and try to get a sense of whether our costs are going up, going down, going sideways. And I haven't reached any conclusion about that and wasn't prepared to think about it for tonight. That takes some study. So, that's why I'll be voting no tonight because procedurally, this has come at us by surprise. I think that's a bad way for the City Council to do business. We should pass this through the committee, the whole, and have a substantive discussion there and study the numbers. So, that's why it'll be a no vote from me.
Mr. Mayor.
Further discussion?
I agree with Alderman McMiniman. When I got this list of the members of the Joint Labor Management Healthcare Committee placed on my desk when I walked into the room this evening, I asked the mayor, is there a plan to bring this health ordinance, the core service health ordinance, out of committee and pass it tonight? And he said no. So, apparently, the mayor didn't know about it.
That's correct.
And I'd ask as a...
I did not know about it.
And I'd ask as a common courtesy that if other Aldermen are planning to bring something out of committee that's been sitting in committee for a long time, at least send, you know, a few days before, or as soon as you know you want to do it, an email to the other Alderman, let us know that, you know, that you're planning to do that so we can then review this and study it prior to the council meeting. And obviously, I just found out about it, you know, five minutes ago. So, had no opportunity to study this before the meeting.
Further discussion? There are no further discussions. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 6-4. The next item on the agenda is Agenda Number 2013-314, an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement with Gary T. Wilhelm and Catherine A. Wilhelm for annexation of property located at 3419 Woodhaven Road. The Chair will entertain a motion to recess the regular meeting of the City Council to hold a public hearing regarding Agenda Number 2013-314.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion say aye. All those opposed say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. Does anyone wish to address the council regarding Agenda Number 2013-314? Since no one appears to want to approach the City Council on this, the Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting of the City Council.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Those opposed say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. The Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2014-314 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion vote yes.
Mr. Mayor, a question?
Please.
Now that we've held a public meeting, can we do an ominous vote for 314 and 315?
I would make the assumption that we could.
Would like to do that.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to have an ominous vote for Agendas Numbers 2013-314 and 2013-315. All those in favor of having an ominous vote, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Then we, the Chair will have further discussion. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor of the ominous vote to approve Agendas Number 2013-314 and 315, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 10-0. The next item on the agenda is Number 2013-324, an ordinance authorizing extension of contract number CS12-05-40 through September 13, 2015, with air-marked uniform and career apparel incorporated, and authorizing an additional $189,847.56 for a total not to exceed $379,695.12 for linen and uniform rental services for various city departments. The Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2013-324 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 10-0. The next item on the agenda is Number 2013-325, an ordinance accepting the bid and authorizing execution of contract UW14-06-33. Clarifier number three, upgrade with Procurer Construction Company Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $4,985,500 for the Office of Public Utilities. The Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2013-325 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 10-0. The next item on the agenda is Number 2013-326, an ordinance authorizing execution of a letter offer for the extension, approving a one-year contract extension and authorizing additional funding in the amount of $144,000 under proposal number UE09-02 with Appliance Recycling Centers of America Incorporated for refrigerator, freezer, retirement, recycling services for a total amount payable of $980,712 under said proposal for the Office of Public Utilities. The Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2013-326 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for passage. Discussion?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Habe. First of all, thank you for emailing me the numbers on the number of refrigerators that we have recycled. From my calculation of the numbers that you gave me, from 2008 through 2012, that's five years, we had, we recycled 3,832. So, and that'd be an average of 766 a year. So, and if you take that divided by, or if you divide 144,000 by that number, I get $187 per refrigerator is about the average cost to recycling one. Is that, is that what you believe to be correct?
I don't have the number right in front of me. I can get that real quick for you if you would like. I'm sure it's a bit amount.
Do you know, Mr. Habe?
Gary Hurley is in the audience from our Energy Service Office of Ministers. He said it's $135 per unit, and the balance goes to marketing the program out to our customers and the vendors that can market the program.
Oh, in other words, we pay this vendor, this isn't, this ordinance is up to 144,000. We pay the vendor $135 per refrigerator, and then, okay, and then in addition to that, what, this way that's, this program works is, there's some, we provide some kind of financial incentive for the consumer to get rid of their energy inefficient refrigerator, freezer, and get an energy efficient one, correct?
That is correct.
And what's the incentive? Is there some dollar incentive, or what's...
Those kind of vary by program. It depends on the ratings and the sizes. So, all of our programs are kind of prorated based on how efficient units are.
So, does the consumer purchase the refrigerator and then come to CWLP and get a rebate, or how?
We tried to market it out, and we also make contact with a lot of vendors. We provide them information on what, how much rebate each type of unit would be eligible for. So, we try to educate the vendors so they can, at the point of sale, educate the customer.
But you have to buy, the customer has to buy the energy efficient refrigerator, freezer first, and then submit that documentation to CWLP and then gets a rebate.
That would be typical, yes. The rebate would come from us.
In other words, you can't go to the vendor, and the vendor gives you X amount off because of the program?
No. It would, typically, it would come back from us.
And included in that $135, that would also be the vendor coming out and picking the refrigerator up and then taking it to their location to take it apart.
So, when you, when I averaged it out, and I got 187, you said the amount in addition to the 135 was for promoting the program. What, how much do we, then we also have to spend some money to give the consumers the rebate? Is that correct?
I can get you a breakdown of where it all went. Off the top of my head, I don't have the exact breakdown, but we can certainly get that for you. How much went to each one of the line items?
Okay. But that's in addition to this figure, the amount that we spent on giving the customer the rebate?
135 is what we pay the vendor.
Vendor, and then...
Per refrigerator.
Right. And then I got, I averaged out the cost of, from this number, 187 a refrigerator, and you said the difference was for promoting the program. So, I was asking, then, the amount that we spend on the actual rebate that we give to the customer, that's over and above this. Is that correct?
That would be correct. That would be correct.
Do we get any federal grants to help us with this program?
Yes, we've got a, that office, Energy Service Office, looks out there from, at Illinois and federally, any of that we can get. We try to leverage our dollars with the consumers further. So if we will give them $50 and we can get another 50 from the state or feds, you know, it just benefits the consumer.
Okay, and I guess the idea here is to reduce the demand for electricity in the city.
Yeah, I mean, it helps, helps the customer out and reduces the load and the need for future generation.
Thank you.
The other thing is you're also hoping that people don't fly dump.
Right.
The appliances all over the city, which we then end up having to pick up.
And then the big part is on the energy demand is, a lot of people will take their old fridge, if there's no value to it, they'll stick it in their garage and it, they'll actually increase energy usage if they keep it active at their household. So by the recycling, we take it back so it's actually off, off the grid.
Alderman Simpson.
Yeah, Director, how successful is the program, would you say, in terms of its inception until now?
I think, I provided the numbers to Alderman Cannon based on my question last week, and I think it's over 4,000 that we've recycled, you know, over the, since inception, averaging 780 some a year. So there's, there's some knowledge out there and it's being, you know, used by our consumers.
Is that about right for city to size or?
You know, I don't know if we have that data, but, you know, we try to educate, you know, the point of sale people the best we can, and we've got pretty good response from the local vendors and even the, you know, the more corporation people, the local points will work with us pretty well, so. And we do, do spend money with, you know, putting flyers in our monthly billings and newsletters and trying to get our consumers educated too about availability of it.
The numbers that you gave me, and I, I don't know, Joe, I asked Joe Davis for that email to the other alderman, the, it started with 2008, that's when the number, is that when the program started?
Yes, I do believe so. It was the first year of the contract.
Thank you.
Further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes nine-one. The next item on the agenda is docket number 2013-327, an ordinance authorizing payment to the United States Environmental Protection Agency in an amount of $508,613.40, and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $318,614 for the Office of Public Utilities. The Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda number 2013-327 on final passage.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion?
Mayor, this is a question for both City Water, Light &amp; Power and Public Works. It looks like we're going to have a total cleanup bill of somewhere between approaching $2 million, I believe, is a, how much?
1.16.
Well, we're going to spend, this is, tonight it's out of the City Water, Light &amp; Power budget, and we're going to 508,000 total spending, and there's an estimate here of 1.18. So looks like it's going to be close to 1.7 million, is that?
There's also 318,614,000.
No, that's a settlement.
That's a settlement.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's included in that.
So it's one, yeah, it's roughly one, one and some change in 500,000 from these facilities.
The question is, it looks like we're going to pick up a portion of this out of the corporate budget and, and about a third of it out of the City Water, Light &amp; Power budget. This, this property was purchased by City Water, Light &amp; Power back in the 1970s.
That's not correct. This, this, it's a white site. Some of it's owned by City Water, Light &amp; Power. A large portion of this is under the roadway, under the sidewalks, which has nothing to do with CWLP. There's some area in the, there's some area in the alleyway between buildings. What we're estimating our part is the property that we own, the roadway and the other parts that are under Public Works is where the other 1.1 million comes from.
I, I think it breaks down like 70% in terms of the city and about 30% in terms of the CWLP. And then you've got, Tony's Electric is, is part of this also. But the vast majority of it is under the public right of ways in Tony's Electric.
So when you, the city owns this property. We don't, you know, it's not two cities, it's not one city, the City Water, Light &amp; Power, another city is the rest of the city. It's, the city of Springfield owns this property. And so when it came time to dividing up, how much share would be budgeted from the utility and how much would be budgeted by the rest of the city, how did you go about that process of?
I understand this is just an estimate at this time. We will pay actual cost. If there's more discovered on CWLP property, we'll come back with an amendment to adjust this upwards. This is strictly an estimate at this point. You know, as they start digging and they find stuff, if they find more and trace more on the CWLP property, we'll pay for those actual costs. If there's less time spent on CWLP property and less at the city, we'll both pay less. So this is strictly an estimate based on the information we have from, they've done, gone out and done test drillings and estimate how much contaminant is in each area. And so we're estimating based on that information, how much excavation work will go on at each site.
So it's not, the division of the cost between Public Works and City Water, Light &amp; Power has not been based on the surface square footage, you're saying, or has it? Or are you saying?
It's based on estimated actual work performed on each person's property.
It's based on where they think the contamination is. They think there's more contamination under the right of way because, as I understand it, that was, that was where they used to dump their, their waste.
Yeah, we have a couple of places where the gas houses were, but there's very little contaminant, so there should be very little excavation there. Yeah, we own a large piece of the property, but there's very little contamination. Majority of what it looks like is where Springfield Iron dumped, the coal tar was in the road right of way sidewalk and on Tony's Electric. That appears to be the majority of where this material is, which is not CWLP property.
And all this was done back before the turn of the century.
Yes.
So, I mean, this, we're dealing with something that, you know, literally is 100 years old.
So this, this is strictly an estimate based on what we think the actual expenses will be for the work done on each entity's property, talking about corporate fund, and we've split electric and water based on the same estimates on how much work will be done in on each area's property because there are separate funds that have to pay for these. So we're going to pay, we will end up paying actual expenses for, that each fund occurs.
Thank you.
Further discussion?
I just have a question. Is it the EPA that actually does this work or do they hire contractors?
They hire certified contractors to work with this material.
Alderman Simpson.
Is this coal tar, I guess it's dangerous to the public in, in terms of, what, fumes or?
Really, I'm not an expert in this, but the main concern is groundwater contamination, which isn't a concern because nobody's on wells in this area. The seeping, there can be some, some fumes coming from it, but, or, you know, somebody were to pick it up and eat it would be a concern, but, you know, because there is some seepage there, they want it removed.
So EPA was just out walking?
Illinois EPA saw the seepage, investigated, discovered that it was coal tar.
Were they investigating the site for some reason or?
No, if, the old Sangamo building is Illinois EPA, which is just up the street from there, and I believe one of their staff happened to be walking through the area and saw it coming out of the roadway sidewalk area.
That's pretty good, Warren.
Are there any other areas in the city where this, something like this might crop up?
Not that I know of. I know there was some stuff before with Silco that the city, that was not anything to do with the city. Ameren Silco actually didn't clean up because it was one of their former sites.
Yeah, there, there actually was a lawsuit from, I think it was SIPS plant in Taylorville on this coal tower. It was, allegation was that it created neuroblastoma in some young people, but I, and then I believe the, the plaintiffs won that, but I don't know, you know, what all the facts were in that case.
Further discussion? Alderman Griffin?
Do we have any idea what this is going to do to, like, for example, Tony's Electric? I mean, business may be out of business.
There are some provisions, what they can and can't do. I mean, they are in the chain of title they own, so they have some responsibility. Ultimately, they will have their recourse on how much they think they can pay, and anybody that owned the property before them, between them and Springfield Iron, could be potentially sought after too.
So do we have that same opportunity with chain of command? Do we have any, any fallback on who we bought the property for and who they bought it from that we can recoup some of this money from us?
That's, that's all part of the process that could be done. If, if the entity still exists, I mean, it's Springfield Iron was sold to somebody else and then there was bankruptcy and then you have to look at, did they buy the assets or did they, you know, not buy them? So there's a whole process in there and we are pursuing that. We've done title searches and looked at those and see who we could potentially have as responsible parties, depending on the final bill. So that'll be, that'll be, kind of, once this is done, we'll, we'll figure out who else may be part of this. And the EPA will have something to say about who gets the first set of bills, but then they're paid and then, then more games may begin from there.
Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion carries ten-zero. The next item on the agenda is docket number 2013-328, an ordinance authorizing approval of an application for water service outside the city of Springfield for property located at 4299 Riverside Drive for the Office of Public Utilities. The Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda number 2013-328 on final passage.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded for passage. Discussion, hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes ten-zero. The next item on the agenda is docket number 2013-333, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorize execution of contract number PW14-07-43 with Autobomb Company Incorporated for the 2013 Streetscape project in an amount not to exceed $121,144.14 for the Office of Public Works. The Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda number 2013-333 on final passage.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded for passage. Discussion?
Discussion, Mayor. Real briefly, is Autobomb Company a local contractor?
They have an office in the city of Springfield, therefore they do qualify for the 5% local vendor preference.
Thank you.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question for, for Director Farmer. You told us at the committee, the whole, this is, this 121,000 or so that we would be spending here out of downtown TIF money, that part of 200,000 that we have to spend on downtown Streetscape in order to get an ITIP, or ITIP grant from the state of Illinois for a million dollars, is that correct?
That's correct.
So we should get, we should be getting sometime maybe next year, a million dollars for downtown Streetscape. When, in June, when your office gave the alderman a list of proposed spending from the downtown TIF, there was one item under consideration was 1.5 million for 2013 Streetscape. With this 1 million that we would be getting from the state for downtown Streetscape, could that possibly reduce the amount that the administration projected of 1.5 million for downtown Streetscape from the TIF?
That's correct, yeah. As I explained to you just a few minutes ago, the 1.5 is what we had forecast ahead of the money that, that came in from Director Mahoney's transportation enhancement program. So we had forecasted the, the expense of those TIF funds for Streetscape. Now that we have the ITIP, we can spend fewer TIF dollars, leverage with the, the ITIP funds. We left that money in there, however, in case going forward through the extension of the TIF through 2016, that we can draw down some of those to leverage in, in future years, potentially more ITIP. And again, leveraging our TIF money against the ITIP funds to.
Well, when this, when you gave us this estimate back in June when we were debating about the murals, at that time, you didn't know about the, weren't aware that we were possibly going to get that million dollars from the state.
No, I did, but we still, we still left that money in there. And again, this is anticipated money and it was money that we anticipate spending on Streetscape. Obviously, you have to approve that.
Right.
So we, you know, we just had that in a budget forecast, but again, you're correct. We did have it in there prior to our knowledge of ITIP funds, let's say, you know, 12, 18 months ago or something. But we've left it in there. Again, as, as we go forward, let's say 2015, 2016, we can use some of those funds to leverage, again, additional transportation funds.
Thank you.
Alderman Edwards?
Yeah, could you just give us an update sometime on the, the expenditures, like you did here?
Sure, be happy to. It really hasn't changed all that dramatically, but I'll be happy to.
Yeah, so we know where we're at, what funds are available and where we're at. That'd be great, thanks.
Mr. Mayor and Director Farmer, just to follow up on the Mayor Houston's comment that this contractor qualifies for the local 5% preference on bidding. Where is Autobomb headquartered, their main office?
You know, with respect, I'd probably defer to Public Works, but I, I think their office is on, I think it's at Capitol Avenue and Martin Luther King Drive, I think is where their facility is located here in town, but I would defer to.
Mr. Mayor, just to correct.
I'm not done yet. Excuse me, sorry.
Okay.
May I, yeah, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm asking not for their local office, but their main office.
You know, I don't, is it Peoria? Morton, Illinois.
Okay. And are you aware of any other contractual work that Autobomb does within the Capitol City?
Yes, they did Capitol Avenue, the, the project, Capitol Avenue improvements.
That was part of Streetscape, is that right?
Well, it's Capitol Avenue, Streetscape, sure.
Yeah, I'm asking, have they done any work besides streetscaping in Springfield, to your knowledge?
They've done sidewalks.
You know, I, I would defer to Public Works, honestly, I, I don't know the answer to that.
They've done the sidewalk program, I think it was last year, maybe the year before. They also are.
Citywide, you mean? Citywide?
Correct. And they also, they do subcontracting with other contractors as well, so they do work in the city of Springfield.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion?
I just wanted to clarify, it's my understanding that in this particular awarding of this contract to Autobomb, the local preference did not come into play. Is that, can, somebody confirm whether that's correct or not? I mean, in other words, they would have gotten a contractor even if they weren't a local contractor.
We did not have to apply the local vendor preference, they were the lowest responsive bidder. They were the lowest responsive bidder by themselves. We did not have to apply a 5% preference against the vendor.
Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes ten-zero. The next item on the agenda is docket number 2013-334, an ordinance temporarily lifting the moratorium authorized by ordinance 276-08-13 in order to process a building permit application for a roof on a boat dock at 1317 East Lake Shore Drive for emergency passage. The Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda number 2013-334 on emergency passage.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded to place this on emergency passage. Discussion, hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open.
I'm a yes vote. My screen is, my screen is not where it needs to be, but I'm a yes vote.
Motion passes eleven-zero. Okay. Is there any old business to come before the City Council? Alderman Simpson?
Will the fountain between East and West Municipal be turned on before it gets cold?
It, it was turned on for just a few days and then something happened with the pump. The pump's under water, misunderstanding. Facility maintenance is working, getting that replaced. Director McCarty may know more about it, but that's why it's off.
Heads off to everybody associated with that. It's beautiful, and I think it's suitable actually for an outdoor wedding.
Once we get, once the weather cools down, they're going to finish off the landscaping and get some grass down, so.
Little warm right now to be putting anything in, but you are correct, Alderman. They've done, done a beautiful job. It, it really does make a, a large, large improvement. Is there any new business to come before the City Council? Is there any new business to come before the City Council?
Yeah.
If not, the Chair will entertain a motion to recess the regular meeting of the City Council for purpose of holding executive session, discuss pending probable litigation pursuant to 5ILCS 120/2C11 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Oh, excuse me, I apologize, would you...
Can you just take a moment, hard vote, please?
Vote, yes.
We need a hard vote coming in and out of executive session. Okay, hard vote, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.